Dance and see other bodies move. And then you'll realize, wow, like,
Right.
there is so much more beauty beyond what I've been conditioned to learn. And I really think that that is possible, and I want to see that change.
Glory Liu, a lecturer in social studies at Harvard. Her piece, "Mind, Body: The Domineering Logic of Ballet", is in the Nation. We'll link you at hereandnow.org. You're listening to Here and Now.
Next time on The World, an Iraqi writer describes life in the years after the U.S. invasion, when shock and awe became open civil war, turning Iraqis against each other.
Suddenly, within two years, I became a stranger in my own city because I couldn't travel across the city as a local, as a Baghdadi, as Iraqi.
Iraq, 20 years later, a view of and from Baghdad on The World.
You can hear The World, Monday through Thursday at 3 on Radio IQ. Radio IQ is supported by Mark Nelson and Virginia Wills Trusts and Estates, a Charlottesville law firm specializing in estate planning, wills, trusts, and probate. VAWills.com. And from J. Fenton, too, on the Charlottesville downtown mall. Women's clothing in spring colors, featuring cottons from Cut Loos and linen clothing from Flax in sizes six to 26. Online at linenwoman.com.
Funding for Here and Now comes from the listeners of WBUR Boston. From MathWorks, creators of MATLAB and Simulink software for technical computing and model-based design. MathWorks, accelerating the pace of discovery in engineering and science. Learn more at mathworks.com. And Landmark College in Putney, Vermont. On-campus and online programs for college and high school students with learning differences, executive function, and attention challenges. Faculty specializes in LD support. More at ldbridge.org.
It's Here and Now. Since the pandemic began, fewer students have been enrolling in college. That means less tuition coming in and tight university budgets, especially at regional public schools. Liz Schlemmer of North Carolina Public Radio reports on one public university facing steep losses.
Half of the offices that make up the chancellor suite here at the University of North Carolina at Greensboro are sitting empty. Chancellor Franklin Gilliam says it is one sign of the downsizing that has already begun.
We're embarrassed to say how many people are actually running this university. We have more empty offices in the chancellor suite than we have people. They're just, you know, not poor CFO, poor chancellor. It's happening to everybody.
The chancellor recently held an all-hands-on-deck meeting with the entire Student Affairs Division to discuss which student services might be cut back. There are no easy choices.
Do you have fewer mental health counselors? Not a good idea today. Do you have fewer academic advisors? Do you have fewer people in financial aid?
UNC Greensboro's enrollment has fallen rapidly, an 11% loss in undergraduate students over two years. Nationally, the traditional pool of college applicants, recent high school graduates, is also shrinking due to low birth rates after the 2007-2009 Great Recession. And since the pandemic began, even fewer high school grads are choosing to go to college at all.
Once the pandemic hit, that decline suddenly really accelerated. So in 2020, there was a much larger drop.
Doug Shapiro is Executive Director of the National Student Clearinghouse Research Center, which tracks enrollment trends at colleges and universities across the country. Shapiro says the national decline in college students is affecting some universities more than others. A recent analysis by the Chronicle of Higher Education found that public flagship universities actually grew from 2010 through 2021, while enrollment at regional public universities across the U.S. fell. He says that's consistent with data the National Student Clearinghouse has collected from the last two years, which show elite public and private colleges are recovering students more quickly since the onset of the pandemic.
As students, some students started to come back. They really only started to come back in the more selective colleges that were attracting the most competitive students. And the declines just got worse and worse. So there was this real split and growing divide between the kind of haves and have-nots of higher education.
Shapiro says many regional public universities are feeling the same budget squeeze that UNC Greensboro is experiencing. UNC Greensboro is facing a more than $12 million loss in tuition, fees, and state funding next school year. That will require immediate budget cuts affecting staff and services the university has grown over the past decade. And that's particularly painful because UNC Greensboro built its reputation on serving underprivileged students, says Chancellor Gilliam.
We take kids from small towns, from inner cities, and we give them careers, and we change their lives and their families' lives.
Almost half of UNC Greensboro students are eligible for federal Pell Grants, a common marker for students who come from low-income backgrounds. In 2022, U.S. News &amp; World report ranked the university among the top 20 in the country for social mobility.
If you want to have a prosperous state, if you want to reduce income inequality, you know, if you want to rebuild the middle class, these are the students who are going to do it. But they need support.
To combat falling enrollment, the UNC system is allowing its universities to admit more out-of-state students, and it's launching an online platform to target adult learners, starting at UNC Greensboro. University officials also say they're stepping up their efforts to recruit and retain students. Many faculty at UNC Greensboro feel uncertain about their job security. Among its cost-cutting measures, the university has put some non-tenured faculty on one-year contracts and implemented a hiring freeze. Wade Mackey is a senior lecturer at UNC Greensboro who teaches ethics to business students.
I don't know if my contract will be renewed at some point. I don't know if all of the faculty who support my program will be renewed. We don't know exactly how large the class sizes are going to have to be.
Chancellor Gilliam says what worries him the most is that the rapid budget cuts to faculty and staff will also affect students and the university's ability to retain and graduate them.
We're talking about people and their livelihoods and their ability to help students and graduate students. And that's our mission. That's why we're here.
Gilliam says he thinks that falling enrollment will pose the greatest challenge to higher education in 100 years. For Here and Now, I'm Liz Schlemmer.
And this afternoon, and all things considered, we're on President Biden's new executive order meant to increase background checks on gun purchases. You can hear that story on your phone or turn on your radio. Here and Now is a production of NPR and WBUR. I'm Scott Tong.
Pastor Mofield, if you would come forward and tell us a little bit about your church, Melrose Baptist Church. And then after you update us on that and lead us in the invocation, I'll ask everyone to stand who is willing to stand for the invocation, and then we'll go straight from that to the pledge. So thank you for being here. We appreciate it.
Thank you for the opportunity. And I bring greetings from the congregation of Melrose Baptist Church. We are located on Peters Creek Road, have been since 1970. And even though our history goes back well over 100 years, we are always looking for new and fresh ways to serve our community. We've been very excited this last year to work with refugee families that have been resettled in the Roanoke County area from Afghanistan, from the Congo. And we are excited to meet and welcome our new neighbors and introduce them to this wonderful place that we get to have the opportunity to call home, that now they get to call home. So thank you for letting me be here today on behalf of our congregation and know that we pray for you all each and every week and pray God's blessing upon you. So with that, if I can.
Yes, please, Rose.
Oh, God, our help in ages past, our hope for years to come. We give thanks for this day that you have made, and we ask that you would help us to rejoice and to be glad in it. God, as this body comes together today, I pray for unity in spirit and in purpose. I pray for wisdom and discernment to be upon them as they make decisions that will impact our community. I pray, God, that you would bless the efforts, the works, the gifts, the talents of each person who serves here in Roanoke County. I thank you for their willingness to serve others. God, may we all be always mindful of our call to love our neighbor as ourselves. God, help us to do that each and every day in whatever way we serve, whether it's as a member of the Board of Supervisors or in a church or congregation or in a school or place of business. Help us to love our neighbors well. And Lord, may what is done here today be an extension of that love. God, we pray for wisdom as we seek to serve one another each and every day. Help us to see the needs of those around us, even those that may not be easily visible to the eye. And as we see the needs, may we respond with deep passion and caring. Lord, now bless what is done here today. May it all be done to your honor and to your glory, for indeed it is you who have made it all possible. I lift this prayer in the name of Jesus Christ, our Savior. Amen.
Praise to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Good afternoon and welcome to our meeting for March 14, 2023. Regular meetings are held on the second and fourth Tuesday at 3:00 p.m. Public hearings are held at 7:00 p.m. on the fourth Tuesday of each month. Deviations from this schedule will be announced. The meetings are broadcast live on RV TV Channel 3 and will be rebroadcast on Thursday at 7:00 p.m. and on Sunday from 10:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. Board of Supervisors meetings can also be viewed online through Roanoke County's website at www.roanuckcountyva.gov. Our meetings are closed captioned, so it is important for everyone to speak directly into the microphones at the podium. Individuals who require assistance or special arrangements to participate in or attend Board of Supervisors meetings should contact the clerk to the board at 540-772-2005 at least 48 hours in advance. Please turn all cell phones off or place on silence. Item A, Opening Ceremonies Roll Call. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Peters?
Here.
Mr. Mahoney?
Here.
Mr. North?
Here.
Mr. Radford?
Here.
Mrs. Hooker?
Here. Item B, Request to postpone, add to, or change the order of agenda items. And before I ask everyone else, I do have a change, and I would like to add the following briefing as item C2. A briefing to review proposed changes to the Proposed Memorandum of Understanding between Roanoke County Board of Supervisors and the Roanoke County School Board regarding additional joint capital funding for a new CTE center or other school capital needs. Are there any objections? And so are there any other changes from my fellow board members? Okay. Mr. Kaywood?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. I would like to recommend the addition of a closed session pursuant to Section 2.2-3711, subsection A5 of the Code of Virginia for discussion concerning prospective businesses or industries where no previous announcement has been made of the businesses or industry's interest in locating in Roanoke County. Discussion will focus specifically upon prospective businesses that have expressed a potential interest in locating at the Woodhaven site in the Cattapa Magisterial District. I'd further recommend that we consider adding that as our first closed meeting as J1 so that Mr. Hall could join us for that, then we could let him go before we consider the other two items enclosed.
Thank you. Are there any objections?
No.
No.
Mr. Lubek?
No changes.
Thank you, sir. So item C, briefings. Briefing by the Roanoke Regional Partnership. Mr. John Hall, Executive Director of the Roanoke Regional Partnership, welcome. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the Board of Supervisors. Appreciate the opportunity to share with you our annual report from last year. So thanks again for the introduction. I am John Hall, Executive Director of the Partnership. Okay, very good. Just a quick bit of background reminder for the audience. The Roanoke Regional Partnership is the Regional Economic Development Group. It was established in 1983. We are a public-private partnership, so exactly half of our funding and half of our leadership is public and half is private. Now, we have a $1.6 million budget, nine full-time employees, 37-member board, of which, Madam Chair, you are a member, as well as Mr. Kaywood, and a 17-member executive committee, of which Mr. Kaywood is a member. To give you a little flavor for how we work, we do generate prospect opportunities, both ourselves and through the Virginia Economic Development Partnership. We assist with business expansions, provide data and information. A lot we do to build the economy, but we generate those opportunities and we share them with each of our member governments equally. And so each of our governments have the opportunity to respond and compete. This is our region, in the light green from the Allegheny County City of Covington in the north, down through Bottitac County and the entire Roanoke Valley. Those are the cities of Roanoke and Salem, Roanoke County, and the town of Vinton, and of course, also Franklin County. This is the map. We show our prospects. The dark green is our extended labor market area. Last year, we did launch our five-year strategic campaign. I'm happy to report that we exceeded our goal. Our goal was to raise $3.6 million of private funds for the next five years. We did exceed that goal by 12%, raising a little over $4 million of private funds. And so at this point in time, we actually have a little bit more than $1 private for every public dollar. So again, we have strong support of the private sector, which believes in our work and sees the opportunity to grow our region. It's a tremendous vote of confidence for which I am grateful. These are our four strategic priorities that the Partnership does work to achieve. The chief one being economic growth and innovation, the business attraction piece for which our organization was founded. We also have a talent attraction campaign and program of work. We do work in commercial real estate and infrastructure. Woodhaven Technology Park being a key example of that. And we'll talk a bit about that more in a minute. And of course, placemaking and livability. This is a mutually supporting program of work that, again, has the main goal of driving new leads, new businesses attracted to this region and growing here, which is our main mission, attraction of jobs, residents, and investment. Last year, we had a number of successes, projects that were closed, eight in total. North American Specialty Laminations, Worth Rev Car, Lowe's are all here in Roanoke County. So congratulations. We were happy to partner on those. We did have five other projects. In sum, it's 435 jobs and $132 million in new capital investment that was secured. Total that up and consider the ongoing annual economic impact, the spin-off effect of those projects. That equals $234 million. And the key point I'll make here is that is the best we've seen in terms of the economic impact of projects from the Roanoke Regional Partnership in over five years, since 2017. So it was a strong year. And the pipeline is shaping up with strong opportunity for this calendar year, which we'll talk about in a bit. But more jobs bring more residents and more economic impact. And that supports not only the manufacturers and traded sector, you know, businesses we bring in here, which are, you know, life sciences and outdoor sector and manufacturers, but those wages are spent in the commercial sector, in restaurants, in healthcare. It grows our overall economy. So again, fantastic economic impact. The lead pipeline is strong, and I'm happy to report in last year, we saw double the level of projects and prospects than we saw in a pre-pandemic year. Just to go over some definitions real quickly. Inquiries are the top level of the sales funnel. That's a conversation that hasn't yet resulted in a tangible business opportunity. We don't yet know a project parameter, the investment, the employment creation. We may not know a sector, but we've had a discussion with a business or a consultant that we are going to continue to work to develop a project opportunity from. A project is when we know the investment. We know the job creation from a project. There's a defined business case, and we are responding with information from the region for that opportunity. A prospect is when one of those projects visits here, okay, and actually looks at our real estate and learns of the advantages to locating the region. Information request are when we answer any type of question. And the Virginia Economic Development Partnership is a gauge on our activity from our state partner. This year, it turns out, we had about half of our projects and prospects that came from our state partner. In some years in the past, it can be as little as a third, with 67% generated by the Roanoke Regional Partnership. And so again, the leads are both state-driven and regionally-driven. Again, double the project and prospect pipeline from a pre-pandemic year. And so the opportunity is greater now than it was prior to the COVID pandemic. We do work to generate those opportunities with a number of strategies, a quite diverse lead generation campaign. It involves not only, we market, of course, with our state partner, Virginia Economic Development Partnership, but we do some activities on our own. We're reaching out to the site selection consultants, those who are working with businesses. They know what the requirements of that business is, and they're evaluating markets on behalf of that user to help locate them. But we do some specific industry outreach, as well as some lead generation call and meeting campaigns, where we're setting meetings with industries, prospective industries, and those targeted industries that we want to see locate. Food and beverage, medical, life science, automotive, electrical equipment, again, research, R&amp;D. We're touching on all those sectors through our lead generation campaign and our outreach strategy. Our outreach strategy is, again, diverse. Not only are we meeting with the consultants, we're also doing a rich and varied digital advertising campaigns, constant and ongoing, which include persona and behavioral targeting and site retargeting through the website. You know, those ads that follow you around the website after you've searched for a good or a product? Well, the Roanoke region is, we're following that strategy with C-suite executives and consultants to spread the word of the advantages of locating here. Last year, we held a webinar in conjunction with Carillion Clinic and Frayland Biomedical Research Institute, talking about the innovation corridor and the opportunities that are in the innovation industry here in this region, which extend beyond, okay, the city of Roanoke. We've had a number of calls with innovation-focused industries, those who would be interested in manufacturing a product, a medical equipment product or a biotech product, a type of industry that might locate on, say, a Woodhaven Technology Park. And so we had over 100 consultants, brokers, and industry professionals that joined this webinar and heard of the message. And we've seen some continued interest around it. The webinar, by the way, generated some content we call evergreen content. So we did record that webinar, and it lives on our website today. And some of those ads that we are putting out in regards to innovation and life science industries points to that presentation. We continue to see interest and activity there. Last summer, we had the opportunity to host the Secretary of Commerce and Trade, Karen Merrick, as well as CEO of Virginia Economic Development Partnership, Jason Elkubie, here in the region. Connect them. We connected those fine leaders with the opportunities here, the assets and advantages of our region. This particular shot was of a dinner with our regional leadership held in the Frayland Biomedical Research Institute, the new addition wing. And I'm pleased to report that I think it was well enjoyed by all. And I have heard and noticed, observed some echoes of conversations that I overheard here and were a part of in the governor's legislative agenda. So I think it was very impactful. Was appreciative of the opportunity to connect both public and private leadership with the secretary. In 2022, the Partnership supported efforts to increase site readiness throughout the region. We were successful. Our governments were successful with our support in securing $3.88 million in projects in the region. This is the highest amount awarded to date from the State Business Ready Sites Program for projects. This particular batch of awards did include the Woodhaven Technology Park, which was awarded just over half a million dollars to improve readiness as well. Quickly, in the realm of talent, I'll share that we did refresh our Get to Know Noke brand to make it more regional in nature, to more inclusive of our outdoor message as well. And really, we believe our brand strategy there is around the mountain and the metro mix. It's a blend of outdoors as well as urban sophistication. And so the brand does reflect that. We are launching a new talent portal. We launched a new jobs board as well. And we're in the midst of collaborative out-of-market advertising together with the Roanoke-Blacksburg Regional Airport in the northern Virginia market. You can see in the migration data significant movement between northern Virginia and our region. We believe that that can continue and be amplified. And so we think there's significant opportunity to attract remote workers as well as other professionals from northern Virginia to our region. On the talent front, we continue to tell the story of what makes our region a prime destination for workers, why it's a prime place to live, work, and play, continue the home for the holidays. You know, there's a significant number of young and mid-career family members who come and visit family here throughout the holidays. And so we have this campaign we put out through social media and promote through a number of channels to reach that audience. And because a lot is changing here constantly. We have always a better story and constantly evolving story when it comes to. a better story and constantly evolving story when it comes to those amenities that make the Roanoke region a great place. I mentioned the job board. We did launch the region's most comprehensive listing of employment opportunity that we are promoting through some of those channels, like the Get to Know Noke channels, which reach young and mid-career professionals here, as well as college students, in addition to others who have moved away and may want to return. We're constantly promoting the Get to Know Noke brand through to those out-of-market areas that we think can contribute to higher migration. But this job board, not only will we be talking about the great things that make our region a wonderful place to live, we're combining that message with employment opportunity to hopefully convert some folks to get them to move and take a great job here in Roanoke, a new career opportunity. Of course, the events are continuing. We've had a strong return to our events. And we really, it seems now that we've never missed and skipped a beat, so to speak. And so the marathon, recognized as the world's toughest race by runners' world in 2022, we continue to add notoriety and attract additional elite racers. This past April, we welcomed 2,864 participants, and we're on pace to hopefully exceed that this year. That represents 40 states and five countries, and the race brought $1.2 million in economic impact, in combination with the Freedom First Down by Downtown Music Festival. The cyclocross event is now adding a new audience of cyclocross racers and athletes, a new level of athlete. It was televised internationally on Discovery Plus and the Global Cycling Network last year for the first time ever. These two additions added a 25% increase in participation and economic impact. We do have Pete Eschelman, who's our Senior Director of Creative Strategies, with us in case there are any questions about our outdoor strategies and events. We're thankful for his efforts. The Anthem Go Outside Festival returned to downtown Roanoke with an expanded footprint and new attractions. The Go Fest committee spent a lot of effort to increase a commitment to equity in the outdoors. It's the most accessible venue yet. We had a 12% increase in attendance, about 32,000 attendees, 147 activities, including high-line walkers who perform tricks five stories in the air above downtown streets. It was quite interesting. Again, the economic impact of that event is about 2.1 million. And we are committed to an outdoors-for-all message. We continue to make the festival more welcoming and inclusive. In 2022, we had a new campfire chat stage that was introduced and hosted community conversations and presentations by Humble Hustle and others, which Roanoke Outside did receive the Outstanding Partner Award from the Humble Hustle Company this year. All in all, just our events alone, it's $3.7 million in annual economic impact. You can add that to the 274 million, you know, that was the business attraction impact for kind of an estimate of our overall impact. And so that's excellent news. We do continue to invest, not only tell the story of the outdoors, but invest to make that story a better one. So over the last three years, $150,000 have been invested in new outdoor infrastructure, good regional representation throughout our entire footprint, diverse projects. And those include three categories of both maintenance, new infrastructure, as well as organizational support. And we look forward to continued effort there. And I'd be remiss if I didn't note that we do continue to be the region's leading data and information resource. Nearly 300 information requests. We do maintain $20,000 in annual subscriptions for data. These are data subscriptions we need to answer the questions of our prospective industry, but they're available to you and your staff if you have questions about economic trends, housing, migration, and so forth. And of course, we continue to work with the great partners at the Regional Commission as well. So we're happy to contribute to those efforts. Madam Chairman and members, that is my report, and I'm happy to address any questions or comments you might have.
We really appreciate your presentation. Thank you. It's very encouraging. Mr. North?
Thank you, Madam Chair. John, as usual, you hit a home run on Friday afternoon one day in January, when we came to you from the Regional Commission, asking a question for the governor on 10-year impact for the airport expansion. And we thank you for your timely response on that following Monday and sharing that with Delegate Austin. That was just what we were looking for. And you met that need in a timely fashion. And I just want to say thank you and to the rest of my board members and to staff. If we have any questions like that, John's the go-to organization that he leads to get those answers.
Thank you, Phil. We were happy to support. Glad it was well received. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
You have comments?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I certainly do. Want to ask Pete a question. On the Go Fest, do you have anything planned for this coming year? Anything new, different, expanding, camping, anything like that?
Our committee has already started meeting, and we're adding camping into it this year as well.
Are you?
And then some other, some more speakers and some more films.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I just, I know I spoke last year about it being over at Riverside and in the grass and all that. But y'all have been able to adapt pretty good. The Radfords still come. And so it attracted us, our siblings, which were out of town, and they came on in. But, you know, keep up the good work. Always like that grass some way in there, but y'all are doing pretty good. John, I want to ask you also, how is our neighbor, Greenfield, and the one in Franklin County, how are those industrial parks doing compared to us Woodhaven and everything we have? Can you give us a little bit about that?
Sure. Each of the properties, you know, has a slightly different, you know, flavor, I guess you might say. So when it comes to utility capacities, location, those factors do come into play. You know, in terms of an acreage size, each of the three parks you mentioned, Woodhaven, Summit View, Botat Center, Greenfield, are capable of competing for the 100-acre opportunity. Again, the utility capacities do come into play. And so we see some variance in terms of what each property can compete for, but they're very similar in many ways, very similar class. Generally, we have some models that all three of those properties go forward for, in addition perhaps to others that might be identified through the region as well. But those are, I think, what I would term our three prime regional opportunities. Mr. Rafferty?
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Peters?
I just want to thank you for everything you're doing.
Thank you. Mr. Peters? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, John. It's excellent report. Partnership is working very well. Keep our fingers crossed. Things look very positive. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I would like to just add one comment real quickly, and really to piggyback on some things that Mr. Radford said about the Go Fest-type opportunities and some of those things. We have a lovely Green Hill Park that I would love to see better utilized for some of these types of festivals. If there was an opportunity to do something new and bring some of that activity out to Green Hill Park, I would love to start that conversation and see where it could go. I think we have some really great amenities there, and we have plenty of grass.
Yeah.
And a river, and a river, so.
Well, certainly, I think we could absolutely have some additional conversation with your Parks and Recreation staff and see what we can come up with together.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Mr. Hall.
So Item C2, briefing to review proposed changes to the proposed memorandum of understanding between Roanoke County Board of Supervisors and the Roanoke County School Board regarding additional joint capital funding for a new CTE center or other school capital needs. Ms. Rebecca Owens, Deputy County Administrator, welcome.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. This afternoon, I share a revised proposed memorandum of understanding between the County Board of Supervisors and the Roanoke County Public Schools regarding the financing of county and school capital projects. This revision will give Roanoke County Public Schools a total of $138 million in bonding capacity over the next two years, plus $2 million in cash, for a total of $140 million for CTE and other school capital priorities. I'd like to just walk through a little bit of background. I think it might be helpful for the viewing audience to just really see where we have been with this program. In 2004, there was a joint county and school capital program that was created through a combined borrowing program that issued a consistent level of debt each year for capital needs for both parties. With this creation, 1/3 of the borrowing is dedicated to county capital needs, and 2/3 is reserved for school capital needs. This program began with an annual debt issue of $10 million per year and has recently been increased to $17 million per year, just as recently as 2023. Since 2005, Roanoke County and Roanoke County Schools have been able to finance the issuance of over $235 million in bonds to fund a wide variety of capital needs. And we've done this all within the existing tax structure Based on the capital needs that Roanoke County Schools identified to us, we developed a plan. This plan was reviewed during a joint meeting with the County Board and School Board at a meeting on December 7, 2022. This plan provided for the issuance of $80 million in capital debt in fiscal year 2025, as well as increase the annual borrowing from $17 million to $20 million beginning in fiscal year 2027. This memorandum of understanding was approved at the County Board meeting on December 13, 2022. And at that time, the county, we did send over via letter, and we requested that the School Board approve the MOU at their earliest possible date. At that December meeting, we also shared this graphical presentation to you that really just shows in the blue, the current outstanding debt, and then in the green there, the proposed projected outstanding debt. And I think the greatest takeaway from this is that in any way we look at it, in the future years, our debt is increasing. And that would be beginning in fiscal year '25. As I mentioned earlier, you know, we would be looking at issuing a large amount for CTE. And so that is represented here. And then under this scenario, through various bond issuances and just really the program continued into the future, that increase would actually continue until fiscal year 2038, at which time it would then begin to come down, and that amount would be outstanding in 2038 at $256 million. So on February 8 of 2023, the county did receive feedback from the schools on the MOU, which we had approved in December. The suggested changes included additions to the background section of the MOU and other minor edits. In addition, there was a request of an additional debt capacity of $21 million, specifically in fiscal year 2025. And I know there at your place settings, I believe Ms. Jacks actually included a copy of the presentation, as well as the three memorandum of understandings, the one you approved in December, the copy of the one that we did receive February 8, and then this new revised version. So with that in mind, Roanoke County staff did work with Roanoke County Public Schools to really just receive additional information, have the opportunity to ask questions, to better understand what some of their suggested changes were, and just reaffirm their capital So what we have over the next couple of slides that I'd like to share with you is a revised funding proposal. It does provide the $138 million of bonding capacity over approximately two years, which is the largest amount since the inception of this program, and really the largest since I can remember in my time here. So I'm going to walk you through the details of the proposal. And then there are a couple of slides in here, Slide 7 and 8, that actually have many of the assumptions that we made in putting this proposal together. Most of those I will actually touch on, but I'm just going to kind of stay on this Slide 6 here as I walk you through the funding for the schools. So for fiscal year 2024, so fiscal year 2024 is already a scheduled bonding year for Roanoke County Public Schools. And so in working with them, we know that the state has right now the literary loan program, which is a program that authorizes bonding up to $25 million over 20 years at a lower interest rate than we would be able to get out on the open market. So with that program continuing, we would recommend in fiscal year '24 that we take full advantage of that program. And we would recommend authorizing a bond issue in February of '24, that is the deadline for the program, of $25 million. And what that would do is utilize the $17 million in their planned borrowing, but then go ahead and advance $8 million borrowing for a total of $25 million in fiscal year '24. Then we would look to fiscal year '25, and this is also a scheduled bonding year for Roanoke County Public Schools. And so what we would recommend here is that we would actually authorize a borrowing up to $55 million. So this would utilize their planned $17 million, and then provide an additional amount of $38 million, which would total $55 million. And so with the bonding from fiscal year '24 and '25, then that would actually get us to the $80 million for the construction of a new CTE facility, which I know is the So moving on then to fiscal year '26, this is actually a scheduled borrowing year for Roanoke County and not a borrowing year for Roanoke County Public Schools, the way that the program is originally scheduled out. However, we have, you know, received the information from the schools, you know, we've looked within our funding information. And so what we've included in this proposal is that in fiscal year '26, we would actually authorize a borrowing of $58 million. Now, this is actually comprised of a couple of different components. So the first of which would be that we would allow Roanoke County Public Schools to really move up their scheduled borrowing that's in fiscal year '27. So they would just move that up one year to fiscal year '26. So that $20 million that from 2027, they would just advance that up to 2026, and then they would not have a bonding that they would issue in fiscal year '27. Additionally, their original request was for an additional $21 million. And so we would recommend that we allow this, much like we did back in 2009 with the Virginia Public School Authority, when they did have a capital project and they needed additional money. We did allow borrowing outside of the plan, but the operating budget for the schools needed to cover that. And at that time, the county did something similar as well. So this $21 million, we would authorize the bonding capacity. However, the School Board would be required for the debt service payment required on that. It would be an annual payment. The way we have it scheduled out in here is it would be over 20 years. In talking with their staff, the preference would be to actually stair-step in, meaning not require that they put the full $1.4 million in the upcoming budget that we give them a couple of years to actually stair-step that amount up so that they can get that debt principal and interest payment into their budget. And then that would remain in there for a number of years until such time as the debt was paid off. was paid off. And then, lastly, we would provide an additional 17 million that would actually be funded out of the plan. Then, beginning in fiscal year '27 and ongoing, we would increase the annual borrowing like we had talked about before, authorizing that amount from 17 up to 20 million. That would be for both Renoke County, Renoke County Public Schools. And as I mentioned before, Renoke County Public Schools would not borrow in fiscal year 2027 because that bonding authority was already advanced, as we just talked about in fiscal year '26. And then, the fiscal impact to that, back when we met in December, you know, we had mentioned that the original plan required us to continue that incremental contribution of 300,000, but to implement that December plan, that number would need to become 525 for both the county and the schools each, beginning in fiscal year '25. And so, this, what we've talked about here today, actually increases that by 25,000. So, that 525,000 would actually move to 550,000, beginning in fiscal year '25 and thereafter for each board, each county and schools. And then, of course, you know, both boards, and this is language that's written into the MOU, would confirm their commitment to continue the incremental increases into the future capital fund, even in future economic downturns. However, there is also language in there that recognizes that, you know, all future appropriations, you know, are annual and are required, you know, by county and school board, and that current boards can't buy in future boards. So, there's all that language in, in the MOU, but I think that the stated intent would be, as we have done in the past, that, you know, we would hold the course, you know, in any future economic downturns that we would need to weather. As I mentioned, the next two slides, I think I really talked about most all of these assumptions. These are just all the documented assumptions that are really around the information that we just covered, and these are all also, many of them spelled out in detail in the draft And I did want to just point out one thing, just as in the December MOU, some of this debt that would be issued is 30-year debt, and so, we don't have a lot of debt that we've issued at 30 years. But in order to work through all of this, the debt that we would issue in fiscal year '25 and '26 is 30-year debt. We are assuming a 6% interest rate in our financial model. And those, that, that same thing holds true for the MOU that you have received today as And then, this is really just to show you, because it does stand out, that under this current financing MOU proposal, the outstanding current and proposed debt based on the MOU before you today, again, the blue is representative of our current CIP, and then the green would be representative of the new debt issuances that we are talking about. And the green is also cumulative, so it's basically looking at the debt that we would issue one year, and then the debt that we would then issue the next year, and, and so forth, but also taking into account any principal payments that would, would, that would be being made on that new proposed debt service. And so, what you see there, as you would expect, because, you know, we are and would be looking at issuing a significant amount of debt in the first few years, specifically FY '24, a little bit in '24, primarily in '25 and '26, is so you do actually, you know, see that debt service actually go up over just a two-year period of time. And again, that would be expected because, you know, that amount of debt is 138 million. And in that timeframe as well, one of those years is a county bonding year, too. Debt under this scenario does stay within all of the county's debt ratios, and under this scenario, we would see increases in the amount of outstanding debt, and it does begin to come down in that same year, 2038, and it comes down to 275 million. Again, not as much as what you saw in December, but the proposal actually has more debt being issued due to that additional 21 million. So, the revised MOU, basically what we did with the information that we received over from the schools is we did shorten the background information quite a bit. It does specify that the county board priority is for the new CTE facility. It does allow for 21 million in additional borrowing to be paid back by the Renoke County Public Schools. And then, it does allow for the advancement of scheduled 2027 bonding to be advanced back one year earlier to fiscal year 2026. A couple of other provisions include that same item that we had in the December one, that the county would provide 2 million of funding from capital reserves to improve the open classroom concept. It does reaffirm the county board's commitment to performing demographic study to inform future capital project decision-making, and that the schools will continue to look at applying for grants for the funding of CTE and other priorities. So, in summary, the revised MOU does provide Renoke County Public Schools with approximately 104 million of new and/or accelerated bonding capacity, plus 2 million in cash. As we just mentioned, 20 million is advanced one year earlier from that fiscal year '27 year. 21 million of that additional borrowing is debt service that will be paid back by Renoke County Public Schools from their operating budget. And then, 63 million of additional borrowing is outside of the 10-year plan, funding by the, the joint capital funding plan, and that is the same as what we shared in December. Combined with the planned borrowing, this gives Renoke County Public Schools a total of 138 million in bonding capacity over the next approximate two fiscal years, plus 2 million in cash, for a total of 140 million for CTE and other school capital priorities. So, at this point, that really concludes the remarks that I had associated around the briefing. Staff would be happy to receive any feedback that you have on the revised MOU. Additionally, once we have that, you know, we're happy to make any changes that you have. We would then, at that point, I imagine, share a revised copy of that over with the schools. And then, at a later time, the county board will need to approve this MOU, as well as we would need to make appropriate updates to our financial policy around debt. So, at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, as well as Mr. Kaywood and Mr. Lebeck.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Ms. Owens, because that was a very thorough overview of, of what we have in front of us, and we really appreciate the work that staff has put into this because it's been arduous, to say the least. And, and I know that our board has commentary to make, so I'll start with Mr. North.
Thank you, Madam Chair. While it's in the MOU specifically, it didn't mention it, and I just want to bring it up to the listeners here and also at home. Article 4, Additional Provisions, sub-paragraph B, contains another alternative source of potential funds to offset these numbers, and that can, is contained in the Commonwealth budget based on regional Chesapeake Norfolk Portsmouth CTE school. If that budget gets passed with that item in there, next year, we're going back to Richmond to try to get bipartisan support to have that included in our budget request. We also, as I understand it from some school board sources, have MOUs that make us regional now, which is paramount to apply for this legislation outside of the construction grants. So, if we were fortunate enough to get 20% on any construction grant, and fortunate enough to get a separate bill for 20 million, then what you presented would be mitigated by those amounts. Am I not correct?
Certainly could.
And that could make the indebtedness lower for everybody. Thank you very much. Good presentation.
Mr. Radford, any commentary?
I just wanted to ask Ms. Owens, so, are the two administrations have met in regards to this, and I just wanted to, is there any information you can share with that in regards to what you just presented, or did they just absorb the information when you presented it to them?
We certainly had discussions with, with school staff, and I think really that's what brings us before you today, because I think the feedback that they have provided previously, they were looking for additional borrowing capacity to try to address some of their other priorities, and we wanted to, you know, share this with you today before we communicate that back formally to the Renoke County Public Schools.
Okay. And then, thank you, Mr. Kaywood. And I just want to share with our board that, you know, I've had, in regards to the demographic study, I have had citizens come up to me and ask us to please do a demographic study because they don't want us to build schools and we can't fill them. So, you know, we've talked about that as a group, and so I don't know where the administration and the, and the school board, but, you know, I think that's important for our, our citizens to understand that and to make sure we don't build something too small, we don't build something too big. We want, you know, we want the right, right mix in there. So, I just, you know, wanted to highlight that. For right now, that's all I, only comments I have right now.
Thank you. Mr. Peters?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, in the out years, or once we start this, I understand that the school board will continue to pay 1.8 million, which is based off of their, what, 2009 bonds? And then, we're going to ask them to pay another 1.4 million, which is 3.2 million on top of what they're normally be contributing to the debt servicing fund. Okay. Do you know what that total will be, that they will be required to pay each year?
Sure. So, so currently today, each, the county and the schools, we're contributing 2.9 million each into this capital fund, and that's the amount that incrementally gets increased each year. So, in the current, in the '24 year, it will be increased 300,000, and then, beginning in fiscal year '25, it will be, it, it needs to increase for each county and schools 550,000. So, that's going to, that amount will, you know, grow over time. In addition to that, Renoke County Public Schools is currently putting in 1.8 million approximately for that VPSA. As is the county, we are putting in about 1.2 million for that extra debt issue that we did back in 2008. And then, yes, because of, you know, their need of additional money, really outside of the plan, 21 million for 20 years, and that's really using all of the calculations on the literary loan, so it's really giving them the benefit of the doubt, and what the least amount that we would require, you know, so literary loan, we're assuming will be 3% interest, calculated over 20 years, that's 1.4 million.
So, yeah, so basically, we're going to be asking them to fund almost $7 million a year in debt servicing, once all this comes in, comes together. So, 3.2, and then you said there's going to be 300, and then another 550, so it's going, it's going to put us right about 7 million. So, I have shared this with a couple of my board members, and I'll share with everyone. I guess the process started 18 months ago or so. We began a very deep conversation with our school board to discuss the need for CTE. We have met with our business community. We enlisted the help of 10 citizens of Renoke County to come be a part of our committee. And this board put what I would consider our reputation on the line. We said that CTE was important, and that we wanted to see that move forward because we understood the needs and the vacancies within our, our business communities, and we strive to do that. We, we want to fill those vacancies, we're valued, we, we try to be a valued partner with our businesses, with apprentices, and so on and so forth. I come back again today, I know this was voted on by the board back at the end of last year, but I'm back again to say that I, I cannot support what's here. I feel like that, I'm worried that the CTE is going to get muddied up in all of this. I have said to some of my board members, and even to some school board members, I would like to see a clean MOU just for CTE. That is a joint project. We have the land acquired, we have the scope of the project. In my opinion, we're ready to go with that project. There's a lot of things we don't know about these elementary schools yet. I know that they've been in, have consultations with RMM or AA, or whatever, whatever the group is. And we don't really know the scope of those projects yet. As Mr. Radford rightfully said, we don't have the information for the demographic study. So, there's things within this MOU that I don't think fit. I think we need to address the CTE because it is ready to go. It is something we have committed to as, as both boards, that was a priority for this area. And I would like to see it, that whatever money's necessary to put, put forth towards that, and to Mr. North and to others' points, that if we get other grant money, then that's great, then we can now shift that money over to whatever the next project will be. But I feel like that we, as I even said to the chairman earlier, I think that we have got our reputation on the line when it comes to the CTE, and I don't want to see anything to muddy those waters. So, I mean, again, I would ask my board, I would ask staff, that we prepare a clean MOU for just the CTE. Let's get that piece behind us. And I even gave the illustration earlier today that, you know, it's no different than in my banking world, I'm not going to loan someone money on a hypothetical. I've got to see what's, where, where it's going to be, what it's going to look like, you know, and I feel like I'm now applying that to this. You know, we, we know what the CTE is going, we've got square footage, we, we know what's going to be needed, we've had those conversations, we have visited other parts of the state, and I just feel like that we need to make sure that there's nothing slowing that process down.
Mr. Peters? Mr. Mahoney?
Several comments. Comment number one is, I support forwarding the revised MOU to the school board. I think it is critically important that we get this process moving forward, and I agree with many of the comments that my colleague, Mr. Peters, made. The chairman of the school board and I had lunch a week, week and a half ago, and I made the same suggestion. Let's have a very clean, straightforward MOU, let's do CTE first, and we can worry about the other capital needs later, in large part because we have no idea what the future economic consequences and situation is. Inflation is still high, we have banks failing, we have no idea what the Fed is doing, and what effect that has on municipal borrowing and municipal debt. So, let's do what we can do, which is CTE, and we'll worry about other capital needs later. But I understand the school board feels very strongly that they want some kind of acknowledgement with respect to other capital needs. Let's try to get together. I think we fooled around too long with the CTE project, and it should have been moving quicker and faster. Number three, my other comment, I'd like to repeat what my colleague, Mr. Radford, mentioned in terms of how critically important the CTE is, but also how critically important the demographic study is. I think all of us have had an opportunity to look at the, the school board's work session data that they had, I guess, what, a week ago? Their own data shows their school age population and our average daily membership dropping. So, why are we continuing to build new schools or renovate existing schools when our existing population is dropping? But that's a fight and a discussion and a debate for another day. I think we have to move forward. I'd like to move forward more quickly, but let's, at the very least, let's forward this on, let's continue that conversation. It, it appears as though it touches many of the concerns that the school board had articulated back to us in February. And so, let's see how things play out, and let's see- And so let's see how things play out, and let's see how our future economic situation is. And I keep listening to my banker on the right, he keeps warning that recessions are here. I have no idea what that does. I hope a recession would lower construction costs, but I don't think it would.
Supply and demand.
Exactly. So we have a lot of difficult issues. At the very least, let's move career and technical education forward as quickly as we can.
So are you saying you're, you're opting for, we, we want this to go forward, but with a priority of CTE and put the elementary schools on hold? Is that what I hear you saying?
No, I, I think in the MOU, we indicate that CTE is our priority. And we're, we're going to continue to talk about the other capital needs. But, but for my purposes, I just want to emphasize that that's my priority, but I don't want to hold the process up. I think we ought to go forward with what we have and put the ball in air court and see what their response is.
Understood.
Madam Chair, if I could just say one thing? And I, I want to just say that you helped clarify where I was coming from. We don't know, we're, we're putting money out there for projects. We don't know what it's going to be, what they're going to cost. And we don't know what the scope is going to be. And that's why, like I said, thank you very much, Paul. But that was why I was making, I have the feeling that I have, we know what the CTE is going to look like, we know what the capacity we need, we need to move that forward. These other two, while are important, one's in my district. I mean, I get it, I understand it's important. But we don't have the information to make that decision. We're throwing money at something that we don't know what it's going to look like, what the size is going to be, or anything. That, that was my reason for, for the clean CTE.
I'll be honest, I'm scared to death to add 100 or over 100 million in debt and put that on the backs of our citizens and taxpayers. And I understand what staff has done, that they're trying to, they're trying to squeeze everything together to make it work. But there is a big difference between paying penalty, or principal, not penalty, principal interest on a 20-year debt versus a 30-year debt, and how that carries forward. And that is going to, that is going to restrict the capacity of this county when all of us are gone.
That's right.
Because when we put a 30-year debt out there, that ties the hands of future boards, future school board, future board of supervisors. That scares me. But I, we have to do CTE. That's critical.
So I'm going to say one thing, Mr. North, and then I'll give you, or a couple of things, and then I'll give you the floor again. But I, what is the timeline for the demographic study? Because I think we've, we've batted that around, and there is concern about what that demographic study is going to say. We anticipate that we would get that information by early fall? Is that accurate?
So I'll start, and then I'll let either Mr. Kaywood or Mr. Ms. Sefcheck finish. But we have actually met on that a couple of times, and we are in the process of really kind of defining the scope. And so we will continue to meet on that. And then next steps would be actually, I think partnering with someone at the, including someone at the schools to be on our committee, you know, getting that to procurement so they can actually get that out. So it's a several month, four, I'd say four-month process from today till all the procurement stuff. And once we actually select a vendor, then the real work begins. So I'm thinking later this fall, early next year.
Yeah, I mean, I think, yeah, my realistic estimate on that would be late this year, very early next year. Because we got the direction from the board, started working in earnest. Actually, our starting point was really the 2016 study that, that the Roanoke County Schools had finished back at that point, to put that together into an RFP. And of course, you know, just as a reminder, we're, we're looking for information outside of that as well. So we want to get useful information that can flow into, you know, the housing study that's a priority of the board. And then also hopefully to help us down the road with economic development prospects as well. So we're going to do something a little bigger than what was done before. But certainly, the, the jumping off point was the, the 2016 work. And the county participated in that as well. I was actually, I think, on the selection committee for that, if I remember correctly. And I certainly attended a number of meetings. So that, that is underway, but I do think realistically late this year, early next year, to have results at hand. I think that it will be well underway, you'll probably have early data, but to have that thing totally wrapped up, finished, presented to the board, as, you know, the document's very weighty, if you look at the school.
Well, here's, here's my concern, Ms. Owens, is that we get this demographic study back, and if there is a continuing trend, and let's say that it's even worse with a demographic decline of school age children, and yet we've already obligated ourselves in this MOU for this funding, how does that work?
I think, so I'll offer a couple thoughts, and then I'll take any help anyone's.
You might have to have legal counsel in this.
So I think that we've worded the MOU in such a way that it basically spells out school capital priorities. And that funding, I believe we have it in fiscal year 26. So that would be July 1 of 2025. So I think we have some time to get that study back, understand what it means, work with the schools on that. And then in addition to that, you know, any bond, any request for issuing bonds for any project, I mean, those have to actually come, and all the resolutions and ordinances and documents have to be approved by this county board before we can, you know, move forward with, you know, issuing the debt.
So even though this MOU has an outline of how we will take on debt, it would still have to come to us to vote for the actual bonding?
Yes.
But this wouldn't take priority? That we wouldn't have someone pointing a finger at us and say, but you said you would?
I would keep in mind two points with that. One point is that, you know, as you saw a few minutes ago, 21 million of that total funding is proposed to be paid for by Roanoke County Public Schools. So certainly, you know, they would want to carefully consider whether or not they want to take on that stream of payments. But then, when you do authorize bonding, you are authorizing that project by project in all cases. So you're bonding a project, not just an amount of money. And one of the places where we made some adjustments to the draft document was to try to strengthen the language around the demographic study shaping those future projects. So the only, the only specific projects that are mentioned in the draft MOU is the CTE is mentioned, and then the two elementary schools, but only in context of the 2 million that the board had previously offered to help, you know, construct walls in those schools. Outside of that, it simply shows school priorities to kind of give both boards that flexibility so you're not locked into specific projects for the very reasons mentioned with demographic studies.
So if that's the case, then they can go on and do Hidden Valley Middle School.
They can change projects.
They can change, and I guess, again, I'm back to the same point of, we need a clean MOU for the CTE, once we have the other data, the, for the, for the elementary schools, and then we, we tidy that up. But I guess that, you know, I guess that brings up another concern I hadn't even gone down. There could be a new change on their side, and now those elementary schools are not a priority, and now they're going to take the money and go to wherever and do whatever. And we've already put it in writing.
Mr. North?
Thank you. The demographic study is needed for no other reason except this. The last one that was done is the 2016. So that's seven years ago. I looked at some of the data the other day because I have more time than most people. And I shared this with the chair. One school had a demo projection of 498 students when it was written back in 2016 for the 2022 year. That school in 2022 has 376 students. That's a variance of minus 122. The school's also at 80% capacity today. Another school, surprisingly, had 85 fewer students in the projection back in 2016 in the demo study than it has today. And that school is at 56.5% capacity. So just on those two numbers alone, without getting into specifics of the schools, and anybody who wants to do the same thing for all the schools, I welcome them to go ahead because I'm not going to take that endeavor on. We need to have the demographic study just to validate what we want to do in the future. I think the message that can be taken from here in the current MOU form is that we have looked at what they've asked us to look at, we have given them what we think is the best plan forward. And with that said, we should send it back to them. And I think that this discussion has been valuable for all of us, but also for folks at home, as well as here that are listening.
I agree.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Peter, did you want to say something?
If I could just quickly. It seems that there is some, to some extent, a question as to what would happen in the future year if this board changed its mind, or the school board changed their minds? Can we be held legally to the provisions of this MOU? And in general, memorandums of understanding are not legally binding documents. And that's recognized in this document. As Ms. Owens emphasized in her presentation, we specifically referenced the fact that we know that this board can't bind future boards, the school board can't bind future school boards. But also, the whole purpose of this is set forth in the, in the first enumerated paragraph under purpose, it's to set out expectations in order to, to finance necessary projects in a fiscally responsible manner and to thereby avoid unnecessary budgetary conflict between the two boards. So the whole point of this is to set forth expectations, as to what the money is going to be spent on and when it's going to be spent on those. That there is acknowledgement of both the CTE need in, in this MOU, as well as a reference to the school's emphasis on the need to renovate Glen Cove and W E. Condeve. So while for the first years, I'm looking at page three of six, under items one and two, the third item specifically sets forth the expectation that the 80 million from fiscal years 24, 2024 and 2025 will be used for the construction of a CTE facility, but there is no such binding expectation with regards to the borrowing in future years. So those could potentially be used for other projects. Again, this is not a binding legal document. The purpose is to set forth expectations.
I appreciate that. That's helpful. Mr. Radford?
Yeah. So I was going to ask Peter a question when you sat in. So let me kind of set the table with, with what you just said. So to me, the demographic study will give us some information that'll help the school board also be efficient with these funds. So for example, in my study, looking at visiting solar schools in South Carolina and talking to other architectural firms that are in that industry, the trend nationwide has been going to create a K through eight instead of separate elementary schools. So the demographic study might show us if, if that trend is occurring. So the question, Peter, is, let's say we get this demographic study, and we see we can be more efficient with the money, how does that play now if they decide, okay, let's, let's do a K through eight school and combine it? So how's that going to play with this?
Yes. Great question. I think the whole, the question, the, the theme of the question is how to manage expectations. And can we come back and take a look at this in the future, in the future, if circumstances change? Absolutely. The only trick is, is what Madam Chair emphasized a few moments ago, is, but what if we have a different vision than the school board does in future years? Can they come back and point their fingers and say, well, this is what the MOU says, and you had, had committed to doing something differently? And again, while this is not a legally binding document, to the extent that we deviate from what's set forth in here, there's potential for friction.
Okay. I think you say, instead of friction, it's unnecessary budgetary conflict.
Yes, exactly.
And I see that looming two years from now.
So just as a summary, and because I really appreciate the discussion from my fellow board members and the information staff has given us, it's been very good. There's great concern about getting that information from the demographic study. And there's future economic concerns, I think, with the bank failures of recent, and, and even just looking at that 6%, wondering, oh my goodness, that's what we've always historically said was our high mark, that might be our starting point at some point. And so that would throw all these numbers off. And these are uncertain times, for sure.
I'm sorry to filibuster some more on this. What happens when you have a native Phil?
Madam Clerk, would you please start the three minutes?
Just kidding.
I just want to say this. I can call John Hull on a Friday and get an answer on a Monday. Because this wasn't a study or grant request, this was a spreadsheet back of the envelope, what's a quick answer? I think a year from now is too long. All you got to do is take the current study that was done and ask them to update it and not reinvent the wheel and start from a fresh sheet of paper. That's all they got to do. Go back in there, take what they got, update the numbers, take it out five years, take it out 10. Just do it, and do it within the next three to six months, and stop, stop waiting for a year. I'm telling you, there's someone who would do that. And all you got to do is tell them that this is, that need is critical. If we wait and get this next year in January, what is January? It's budget season again, both for the schools and us. And so I'm saying there is a better way to do this. You've just got to prep, talk to some people, and get a, get a study updated. You don't need to start a brand-new study all over again. And if you can't get someone to do it, I bet you could give that 2016 report to John Hull, and he could spend some time on it, maybe a week or two, and come back with some numbers that we need to consider going forward.
John, you should have left earlier.
I know. He's regretting his life right now.
There you go, John. That's what happens when no good deed goes unpunished.
I will just suggest to the board, I do think we're obligated to procure this. However, I think Mr. North has provided an excellent criteria to use in our selection, which is, one of the things when we do these types of procurements, is what folks' capacities are to do the work and how quickly they can do it. And I'm here glad and clear from the board that you all would like that sooner rather than later. And, you know, in some procurements, that is a deciding factor, is just speed. So we will make every effort to have that to you sooner rather than later.
Thank you. Mr. Radford, you have a final, final comment?
Yeah, yeah, one more thing. And Phil, I blame it on him because he brought it up. But on the construction piece for the schools, you know, two of the supervisors said, we don't, we don't know the scope. But, you know, they don't have to reinvent the wheel. They can go out, the school board has already said, we want to do the design-build format, okay? That's when they go, they can go hire somebody like RRM or Balzer, and they can do a tier, different tiers on different occupancy levels on Glen Cove and Condeve. And they can, they can tell us with pretty good accuracy with square foot, and they can tell us real quick, it doesn't take a long time, but they can tell us real quick, they might have already done it. And they can tell us what those, those costs will be and that scope from their program for those, for those two schools. So they could, they could tell us that really quick. I just wanted to emphasize, it's not going to take a long time, just like the demographic study. You can find out real quick. And the same with the CTE. I know they've got the program data, they've, they've got the design people close to getting on board, so they're, they're going to get real close with that number, too. So it's, it's real close by.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Radford.
Can I say one last thing?
Of course.
Phil started it, so I'll just say. And I guess, I'm just, and I've shared this with several folks, you know, with the chairman earlier today, I guess I'm also struggling with what you just said, David, is that what, what are we going to do with the two older schools? At first, they were going to be talking about building new schools, but now I'm looking at those schools, and it was Hardy Road Elementary when I went there. But W E. Condeve, I, I guess I'm struggling understanding what we're going to spend 30 million dollars on to put walls up that, I mean, I'm trying to figure out what that scope of the project is going to look like. And I guess that's the other reason why, you know, again, I'm not against doing the elementary schools, anybody who's talked to me knows that I'm, I want to make it happen. I just feel like I don't have enough information to, to push it forward.
Yeah.
Because I'm going to spend 30, 30, I've heard as much as 38 million dollars per school, and I'm going, what am I getting for 38 million that I couldn't build a new school? Maybe a new school, depending on what the demographic says, that I, I think we have land at both, both schools. I know with W E. Condeve, we can go up on the hill and build a new one. We, we just don't know. And I, I guess, again, as, as we talk more, and I do really value this conversation.
I do, too.
Those, those are the things that, that kind of keep popping up to me, is why do I have this reservation by putting everything in the MOU? Well, Paul brought up one, and David just brought up the other one. I'm going to spend 30-some million dollars on these two old schools with the question of what am I really going to get out of them? And that scope's not really been shared with us. And I guess it's, again, it may be it's lack of knowledge on our side.
That's true.
So, and I'll be quiet.
Thank you for the information. Thank you for the briefing. It was very informative. I do believe that there will be some additional discussions, but thank you for the information. I do believe that there will be some additional discussions, but thank you for the information. So, item D, public hearing. Public hearing for citizen comments on the real estate effective tax rate for calendar year 2023. Lori Gearhart, Director of Finance and Management Services. Welcome, Lori.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. This item is to conduct a public hearing for citizen comment on the effective real estate tax rate for calendar year 2023. Per the Code of Virginia, 58.1-3321, when any annual reassessment in the county of Roanoke of real property would result in an increase of 1% or more in the total real property tax levies excluding new construction, a calculation known as the effective tax rate increase is required to be completed. The county of Roanoke's real property assessments excluding new construction increased by 10.33% over the previous year. Therefore, per state code, the county must calculate the effective tax rate increase, advertise, and conduct a public hearing for the effective tax rate increase. The advertisement was published in the Roanoke Times on February 12, 2023. After conducting the public hearing, the Board of Supervisors, should it so choose, may elect to keep the real estate taxes at the same rate as prior year or make adjustments to the tax rate. And I do want to remind that at the 7:00 PM meeting tonight, we do have on the agenda to have a public hearing on the maximum tax rate and also to adopt the resolutions to set those maximum tax rates later on this evening. So at this time, staff does recommend conducting the public hearing to receive citizen comments on the real estate effective tax rate for calendar year 2023.
Thank you, Lori. Madam Clerk, have we had anyone sign up?
No, ma'am, we have not.
So I open up the public hearing, and there being no one signed up to speak, I will now close the public hearing. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Moving on to appointments. Is there any board member that has an appointment not yet given to the clerk? Moving on to the consent agenda, is there any board member who wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda?
No, ma'am, I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes. Item G, citizen comments. Have there been any citizens to sign up to speak?
No, ma'am.
Moving on to item H, reports. Is there a motion to receive and file the following reports?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes. So item I is a work session, a work session to discuss the opioid abatement process with the Board of Supervisors with Mr. Lubek and Madeline Sechak. And then we will go into a closed session pursuant to the Code of Virginia as follows. I will move to go into closed session pursuant to the Code of Virginia, section 2.2-3711.a1, to consider and discuss prospective appointments to the Roanoke County Economic Development Authority and section 2.2-3711a7, for consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members pertaining to probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. The probable litigation concerns a Roanoke County business that is in violation of the provisions of Roanoke County Code and section 2.2-3711a5 of the Code of Virginia for discussion concerning prospective businesses or industries where no previous announcement has been made of businesses or industries interested in locating in Roanoke County. Discussion will focus specifically upon prospective businesses that have expressed interest in locating at the Woodhaven site in the Catawba Magisterial District. Is there a second?
Second.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes. So the board will now recess to the third floor for work session and closed session. We'll return at 7:00 PM for its evening session. Thank you very much.